The one, the now with all commissioners person except for Clark who calls in. Uh, first, I am on the agenda tonight is agenda changes, agenda changes. Before we get agenda changes, something.
Uh, I do have a question on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
We had, uh, three months ago, I think, or something like that, the public com- eh, actually, probably, uh, not the march, the public comments at the beginning?
Yes.
Why did we move into the end of the meeting?
They were supposed to be at the beginning and the end, yeah?
No, it's a motion made, I think, two months ago, to where there is a public comment section at the beginning of the meeting.
And at the end of the meeting.
So it's thirty minutes.
Right.
And at the end, if.
We didn't finish.
If we didn't finish.
That is correct. So we'll need to move to public comments and in between board issues and ten minutes approval, is that correct, sir, to be have?
That is, uh, correct, I believe.
Alright, so we will move to public comments to, for the resolution to in between board issue and ten minutes approval.
Oliver, you have seven, Oliver, Thomas.
If it's needed.
Okay.
You're welcome. Are there any other agenda changes? Still there, Lawrence?
Yeah.
Okay. No further agenda changes, you best move on to board issues, are there any board issues? No. Alright. Alright, we'll move next to public comments. We will have a public comment and, remember when here, it's public, please address the whole board, not just one individual, and, um, go ahead and start, uh, Mr. Fox Johnson.
Sir.
Professor. Um, just stand up or just sit down.
How do you want to?
May I sit, may I sit, which I can't see myself, I don't know if everyone can hear me. Um, I'm Nora Graham. I moved here in nineteen eighty-one, nineteen eighty-two, and lovely day. Um, it seems to be exactly the same in nineteen eighty-two, as it is now, many change operations. Um, several weeks ago, I talked to Tom Bill about the pool being cold, and we've had several talks about it, um, right, we some of the issues involved, the goal being, what, eighty-five, and one big group of people who, oh, he is, sometimes people go, oh, cold, and they'll drop again, and it's never been, but I have a petition here, informal, just in case, um, the other side, by the temperature of the pool water, like, the temperature increase, the high temperature, I've been Googling lots of information, that we, um, if everybody had regarding water, cannot have a problem. However, if your pool is used for the worst pool in the USA, they're saying that highly congested swimming, the temperature seventy to eighty, for, um, eight to ninety-four, this is the United States water fitness association, should change their solars, eight to forty-six, I thought eighty-five to ninety, these are eighty-nine, I tried to eight three plus, um, and those, so, um, so, eighty-four to eighty-six degrees, you know, it's when we first encountered any of the people who had something to do with, um, they were also helping, so, scratch that, it's narrow, yeah, a lot to look, I was gonna say, we actually have on the agenda for new business. So I was gonna ask you to present this during this, this new vote.
Okay. If you wanna finish your presentation now, then we can just discuss it as a board on our new business, we can do that.
Okay.
But, um, it's up to you.
I, I don't have, um, much more to say.
Oh, go ahead, you're gonna try to say it.
Um, no, 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 not like a rest alone for ages, because it isn't, um, it isn't a, um, a big, it's trying to raise it to a difficult, you know, temperature, it can be accommodated, whereas, um, perhaps the eighty-three degrees, in fact, um, in a couple of cities, uh, they need to be cold, and most are, and cold, there's always between eighty-three and, here from Victoria, areas of pool temperatures, and in this pool, eighty-five, so, um, the temperature that we're requesting of eighty-three, then, perhaps, is, so, um, here's the petition, it's a hundred and forty-seven inches hot, um, I don't have anything more to say, except I, well, it is, um, accommodated, and, um, one of the businesses, okay, who are doing, um, gets very cold, and they just don't wanna keep coming, they shiver, they have to wait in between, um, question that first time, they have to wait on the pool, they get too cold, they're going to start crying, and, um, all of them, they're in trouble with the children, um, they're all the old ladies that are in trouble, it's just to cry and they're alive.
Would you be staying off the question, should we have questions for you, uh, during your new business?
Um, if I don't want to get involved in hearing, you know, the little tunes and bullshit, um.
Okay.
If there are any questions, then it's appropriate, so, if I can answer, I'll be happy to.
And you're, please, uh, call the bond. Sandra, thank you very much, Emma, sorry, I couldn't read the petition.
Um, actually, I think I think you know for that, actually, presentation, and I'm new here, I wanted the old purple lady, and I wanted to get a little bit warmer, so, and would a pretty maybe would consider the petition.
Please, no, 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 Miss, Professor.
Me, me, I'm.
Need you?
Hi, my name is Lisa Weber, and my most favorite place in Oklahoma is in the pool, I love the pool, and without this pool, because I don't walk all the way down, I have that knee, and I have that ankle, so, this is my life's favorite. I just don't know what I'd do if I didn't have this pool, and I have tried a lot of things to try to be warm, and I think, as I need to go for the water, I probably no more, and there are a lot of people here for health reasons. I also realize that some people want the water, at once again, it becomes water that's everywhere, and I think the only fair way to do it is just meet all my little guests, and also, if money is a situation, in using the pool, and I would be willing constantly to pay an extra dollar every time I came or more, if I have to, I would do anything to be able to come into this pool, I thank you, I just, well.
Thank you.
I have a letter, I, uh, tracked it up today, I'd like to read it and work, and I'm sorry that this does concern the auditor and stuff that was just done, because I think that's a very important issue. Uh, there are park commissioners, I would like for that to be read, also, the bar director for the past, for the, uh, park commissioners meeting on the seventeenth, October, two thousand thirteen, I would like to say that after reading the report from the state auditor, that I believe that the director Walker performed his job very effectively, by removing two people inquiring about illegal accounting and demanding deceit. I also have some questions I would like to have answered. Who authorized the loans for two thousand seven hundred thirty-eight dollars and eight thousand one hundred sixty-three dollars and eighty-nine cents in certain family swims? A lot of the people on the team at that time were not allowed to swim because they were not authorized to swim under loans. What was lost with it, but does other park commissioners share in the previous abuses that were being conducted? There is park limits in some of the boards that, uh, are involved in this, in my opinion, because it should have been overseen. What action the park board is going to take to collect the seven thousand eight hundred eighteen dollars, that the state, that the state has investigated, and the six hundred thirty-nine dollars and forty-nine cents, they recommended, but they won't need to pay, and the other associated people. As a citizen, I don't think I should pay that seven thousand eight hundred dollars, that was requi- that was required because of negligence, being before. And, all I've heard is, uh, Mr. Walker being called out by several people, and I'm gonna mention names or anything like that, and that includes some of the, uh, uh, four park commissioners. My last question on that is, what protections will be placed for Mr. Walker if he calls someone else? That is his job. All he's been criticized for the last part since he been hired here is doing his job. You guys aren't doing that. Sorry, this, uh, what Mr. Walker is doing, what he was hired to do, I hope that he will stay on his director, I hope that you will be wise in seeing what he is doing, and not influenced by the selfless people that are always looking for their best interest. My question, why are you on the board, and do you have the people's interest, or are you only looking out for somebody else's? Because I've heard that statement several times. There's a certain group of people, if I'm here representing, no, you're representing everybody. And if anybody wants to discuss with me, I'd be more than happy to. I have coffee, I'll make sure everybody to have.
Have you received a public committee report, taking the look at allegations?
I just hear our record, if you had a public committee report on the commission. I've looked it up. But I really have it in doubt, and this shit came out like a week ago.
How long ago did you, uh?
Do I do this from now?
No, that came out.
That's fine, right. Yeah, it's fine with us, and it's good, sir.
Uh, I, I can tell you some, I can answer some of your questions, people, um, I, I know that some families that are in mind, um, have paid the, um, have paid the district member, so, the, the taxpayer does not, um, is it, that is correct, yes. Uh, so, the twenty-seven hundred and two thousand seven hundred thirty-eight dollars and the eight thousand one hundred sixty-three dollars and eighty-nine cents have been paid in full, okay?
Was there anything, uh, back, I mean, as far as, uh, the late fees, or anything like that?
Uh, we did not, because late fees were not enforced consistently prior to the state auditor's reports, one of the reasons we did the state auditors. Our one finding was that, um, the late fees were really low, um, and, and that's not, that's not the state for her, that's not.
That's fine, that's fine.
That's shameful. Uh, it was not consistently enforced, um, so, because of that, um, you can't charge late fees to just two people, you know, we have to go back and charge late fees to everyone.
Okay, are there other people that, my next question is that?
What other people on the team at the time were not allowed to swim because they were not authorized for saying they were? That I could not answer.
That's a very serious question, and you, yeah, oh, it's a very serious question, and I'll tell you this, that, um, you know, the, the practice is various depending on years,
you know? What was calculated, park commissioners sharing the previous abuses that were being conducted, obviously, the book stops here at the five person board. Um, there's only two of us that are on the board currently, that were, uh, but Lori and I were four months, five months into our term, when the state auditors, uh, dropped the, uh, I'm trying, yeah, Lori and myself, um.
You dropped, and I'm gonna take a word from the eleven?
Two thousand eleven, just.
You dropped eleven to become two thousand twelve, sorry, I gotta write that part.
No, that's, that's fine, not done, um, but, uh, at the end of the day, the responsibility is ours, um, that's why we, um, wanted to play this, and we, we asked the board, asked the, um, director to give those, uh, other than other commissioners, and that was something that was done with other programs prior to the swim, just the swim team, um, so, so, those finances were now brought under the control of the director, US about checks and balances, they're under the control of the director, he is one of the two bonded employees, which is what it should be, um, and that's the checks and balances we currently have in place, is that our two bonded employees, right, um, the finances are under them, and of course, on us, we are on the voucher system, and it shouldn't happen again, um, this way we're able to review them at any time, or in the past, we were unable to review it. Part of the auditor's report, which was shown in the past, but keeping, uh, things that was, that were said to have been here in our records, are quite simply wrong, okay, and they didn't exist, and, um, that was not done correctly, so, that's why we've brought it back under control, with the oversight, um, of the five people that are on, um, action, um, lots, like I said, that's already been collected, uh, the seven thousand eight hundred oh, you know, seven thousand, seven thousand eight hundred seventeen dollars.
That is the auditor's bill to us.
The auditors go up to us, yeah, that's a hundred thirty million dollars and forty-nine cents.
You haven't initiated any of that?
We haven't initiated action yet.
Alright.
And that's all I'm gonna say, currently.
And, the thing is, I know you can say more.
Okay.
So, I appreciate that.
Okay, you're welcome. Uh, and as far as protections for the director, um, you know, that, there's a tough, there is a tough question, anytime somebody is an employee, at will employee of a board, as the contract, uh, goes, um, just like any director we've had, incorrect, incorrect on the sound, um, the director can be fired, um, terminated, I think we want to say, uh, for cause, and, um, also, without cause, I, I haven't agreed exactly, you remember?
They weren't referred in the whole building.
Yes.
It wasn't, we, 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 absolutely, we, we.
So are there protections against a certain director, or you can even go, no, and, and that's not just here, and if you look at the history of the city, you know, if you take a much bigger, you know, organization, where at will positions are, if you look at them now, yeah, if you look at the city, it's, you know, you saw a half an employee there, good matter and difference, that's the situation right, so, you know.
Well, no, I understand that, but again, the thing is, is right first, you know, being planned by several people, and very little park commissioners, probably a couple of picked it up for them at times, and, you know, the whole thing is, there's a lot more information that was gonna be coming out, and everybody knew, because everybody knew this year was being done. But, thanks.
And, resting, go. I think it's fifteen, you know, um, I'm sure me, so I hope you know, seven years. Um, I have a couple of pictures that, that was one week ago today, uh, the little ones, uh, I don't know, I'm not sure, I'm thinking, um, yeah, I don't even get it on my face, I can't picture it, it's really cool, yeah, it's not really my major part, but I know it's gonna be too late, but, hold on a minute, um, I had a little, I was, uh, I was annoyed a couple of times, because, um, the schedule that was posted, so, it's been, it's not coming from, you look from the start, and if you're being, you know, that, but I think, we, they're uncomfortable, that's not okay, one time maybe, but it happens, it's, and it's, and it's, and it's, and people know, okay, it's going to happen, so, and maybe it's, I don't know, but, I'm, I thought it was, not, I don't know, it's, I don't know, another thing that's off, off in me actually, is that, um, and I don't know what, I mean, I was a big tea, I was a German, I was, I, oh, of course, you know, but also, you know, I'm, I was, because people on the, uh, to go into the lobby, and I, you know, I was young, so, I used to say, I think, I think, and of course, for, you know, reason, and just, it's not happening at all, and in my eyes, first, eventually, as the show ends up in the wall, um, people walk the outdoors, they technically, they walk the outdoors, and, you know, and, you know, it's just, right, but, the thing is, I'm waiting on, on the water quality, they, and then, the more you're, the more, the more you're confident, um, for, for me, and for, for, and also, I think, that's, I think, I think, for last year, maybe, there was a lot of, I mean, that we do, something for having the wall, um, I know that, all the time, like, it was much different, I was more, I had to buy, you know, food or clothing, or clothes, or, you know, and we, um, but they got issues, I mean, you got, the, the fire bars, and the breathing, uh, that's, they, like, um, um, I'm obviously, I, they don't, they, 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 and then I started to, and then I, that, that's not like, if I would have to, I would, but I also, like, the water, the water, and they are, and, 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 and,[1783.83] center of the pool, blowing straight down, which we knew what Tom is talking about, um, to agitate that water, lay that surface level, and blow the gases off of, off the water.
You know, we've got a budget meeting next Friday, so, what if we, uh, get some ideas on these capital improvements that will make the pool better for everybody? Got those next week.
Do you have a, uh, sort of very low budget temporary solution that's been in place for a little while? Christina, just out of interest, when you come in at five thirty in the morning, you know, people, they're in the quarters of the pool back usually turn on when you come in, just, you know...
I do, I do, and sometimes I do, and sometimes I do late evening, right, but, I, I don't know.
Well, that's part of our life, sort of, full, we're...
And let's also look at options for buying, for buying, um, larger fans, electrical fans that push and, period. Thank you, Christina. We have no further comments, it's not up to you, you raise your hand, and I'm going to come back with you. I'll get right back to you.
I said at the desk, I don't know if it's a good, but just about, to come back in here, and he took my, 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 so, which was, I was being, I saw the, 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 the desk, and he dropped the water out of the pool, to clean the desk, and what he cleaned the desk, I don't tell you from what, so, I'm supposed to clean the desk, or something like that. No, 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 I tell you about that, so, it, it, no, it's not, he does, that opening down, you know, that the water's supposed to go, but I guess, why are you using water out of the pool?
Because, because it has chlorine in it.
Well, I know, I know, and, and, that is not to keep the germs off those little children's feet, so, that's what my concern is.
That's what I've heard, and, like, the people that I've talked to about, about...
But I'm very worried, because I see all those little children coming in, and they're little people, and they don't have shoes on, and, I mean, I know, the, whoever she's got, okay, okay, that's enough on me.
I'm really scared, are you going to blow up something?
I don't know, 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 I don't know. I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know.
I think it's awesome, you're saying, I think it's awesome, but, it's awesome, it's awesome.
Okay, you know, we held that water test in here, not okay, since, I'll, I'll bring back our water. Uh, talk to Bill, again, we have no way of getting a recording to guide you of water tests, for the computer, for the shore home purposes. Uh, even if we did, that is the control setting that's in the room for the water heater, it's not the actual water temperature in the pool, so this is first, and a delta value there. Second off, you have the cycle rate of your water heater, you set it at any series, what you want, it goes on when the water temperature's down to eighty or some value, and then goes off when it's eighty-three. We don't know the historical cycle value, where it's how many times per day it does that, and are these values correct? Third item, we don't have any kind of recording, as I mentioned, and Noel, he wrote a copy of that, uh, recommendation, he just passed it out, he'll use one of them, it was just a water temperature and shore home monitor system that's available, one for two, and one in the hot tub, one in the pool, and this will be able to find out the duty cycle, what are the temperatures where it goes on and off, and what is the temperature value for the pool water and the hot tub water. And again, my recommendation would be, look at these values before we consider changing the water temp, make sure that what we're getting, and the scoreable values, and chart values going over there, that's a lot of, are correctly, yeah, based on air water temperature values. The third item on that is going to be, if we do size, go with an increase in the water temp, thousand ounce temperature, two thousand and three, two thousand and seven, cap, gas, ten percent increase in utility values, apparently, it's ten to thirty percent increase. So, Noel was officially talking two degrees, going south one degree, so that should be a potential ten to thirty percent increase across the board for water, because of evaporation, gas, electric chemicals, and as the public or candidate, yeah, want to take on that additional financial responsibility, to increase rates, to run the water increase by a degree or so.
And you were, sir?
Yeah. I, I do a big thing.
Oh, thank you.
It's fifty bucks, sixty dollars, I think, go beyond a dollar, so, but again, that's the item, we'll be in in two weeks, and we're going to have to do a bill factor on, of all of them, with a rubber, you know, liquid thermometer, to be able to calibrate, and off, and there's, then we have the air tap right over here, they don't bother me, but I donate it. And again, along with that water temp, we'll be able to find out how accurate it is, what the duty cycle is, what they need to set the control side there, to get the end result, eighty to eighty-two degrees on their temperature, and then see if there are, if there are any changes, because we're not going to correct three now, and then if we do, we want to go ahead and increase the values, um...
Thanks, sir. I'm actually going to stop public comment, I'm going to exceed your hour and I apologize. Is there any public comment? I will have it at the sec, at, at the end if it's needed, all right? So, we're going to call the public comment, move on to your minute approval. Fortunately, um, since we... I'm going to stop. So, minutes of, for the minutes of August fifteen, regular meeting, and the minutes of September nineteen, regular meeting. Minutes from August fifteen, regular meeting, any changes, revisions, or, um, omissions?
There is one thing that I would like.
Yes, sir.
Is when there, when there's a vote, not a motion, that we list, uh, if there are names, why, however you want to do that, that we actually put that in there, that way people can easily see how people voted on issues.
Okay, we can take that up under new business?
Okay.
Is it all right with you?
That is fine, sir. Thank you.
Any changes, revisions, or omissions from August fifteen, two thousand thirteen minutes? I guess, sir.
I, I would, we could, um, I do have some comments.
Would you make your proof, the August minutes? And who has a second?
Second.
Second, comments?
Um, I, I asked, if we do the minutes, I can't, um, while they're all fine, but it's, it's all over, you wear them, and I, and we have to, just, you know, make the motion to accept, and so on, and it sounds like the president, anyway, oh, well, with the minutes, they're supposed to be all, so, hey, what happened, so, all happened.
Well, I know you said you wanted to do this in new buildings, but I would like this to be these minutes, amended, to have that in there as well. Well, when there's a motion made, when there's a vote taken, so the public can easily see how people voted, whether you voted aye, nay, or whether you abstained.
What if it was something that usually requires a motion, instead of just adding the normal vote, and a vote aye taken or not? You want to ask everything under course, vote, but it's pretty difficult to...
I don't have any problem with that, I think the current problem with, uh, standing, you made the, you know, I'm going...
That's, I, I do understand that, I do understand that.
I'll try to catch that from now on, that's, you know, that's fine, I think it's, that idea, especially when somebody's, um, going against, uh, already, need to know that.
Thank you very much.
Congressman Stevens, do you want the August minutes to show the votes?
Yes, as well as September.
Do we have...
Everybody knows about everybody.
Will you table, can you table two?
No way.
But if you want to do it from this point, we will...
Okay, all right, okay. So, let's see what the motion on the table then, that is, the approval of the August fifteen minutes, any changes, any other comments, pardon me? No other comments? All in favor of approving the August fifteen, two thousand thirteen minutes that stands? Aye?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously on the minutes from September nineteen, two thousand thirteen? How's that in motion?
Motion to approve...
We have a motion to approve the minutes from Thursday, September nineteen, two thousand thirteen, do I have a second?
I have a second.
All right, discussion. No other discussion? All in favor of passing, approving the Thursday, September nineteen, two thousand fifteen minutes? Aye?
Aye.
Minutes are passed unanimously. That's our review. Your September vouchers first, um, pointed out by the secretary, that the review of July payroll was not approved during the August meeting, but first we were, this voucher staying in the payroll for August, yeah, September.
I'd make a motion to pass the vouchers up for forty-one thousand, one hundred ninety-eight dollars, ninety-five cents, and the payroll transfers in, from the MNO account to payroll account of thirty-nine thousand, one hundred thirty-two dollars, ninety-four cents.
And a motion to approve the vouchers for forty-one thousand, one hundred ninety-eight dollars, ninety-five cents, and the payroll transfers to the MNO account, payroll account of thirty-nine thousand, one hundred thirty-two dollars, ninety-four cents. Do I have a second for the discussion?
I think we've had a pile of the cheap credit cards. What happened? The, um, credit card gets sent to, the bill gets sent to us right at the end of the month, for some months, you may see two, might not see any, so it's just a matter of timing of when that, that bill from the credit card, have we have to get it processed. There was one process, uh, for the first voucher cycle of, um, October, and we'll probably see another one at the last of October, so you'll see two over next month. You remember, there were none in July, and then you saw two in August. Outside, it was included in the vouchers, and it was, none of the cards, we had vouchers who stuff for, I've been paid with the vouchers. Right, none of this, that's correct, yeah, yeah, those are all, those are all pre-check coming from the contract, okay. That's really easy to do. So, you just said, there's the electric, there's electrical, and we heat the, the pool water and the air with gas.
With gas, and probably got an hammer on the other discussion, because...
What's the gas, do this, um... Cascade, Eco-Gas, that's it, that's forty-four hundred and eighty-six dollars, so, thirty-four eighty-six. By the way, this, this will apply under the budgeting discussion, but that, that thirty-four hundred dollars is about average, a little, that's a little bit below average for the gas bill, but we, um, we, yeah, we got her back, but we don't eat without eating any water, because I told her that, you know, but we, um, we, um, don't know how much of that goes toward heating the air, and how much goes toward heating the water, because we only have one meter in the back, which is, and the pool water, yeah, just I think, though, the cooler comes, heating the air and heating the water, it might be somewhere above, you know, and... And it's, you would think that the, heating the air would increase in the winter, because we always have to be bringing air into the outside, at least twenty-five percent of our air comes in from outside, so, what, twenty degrees outside, we're heating a lot more air. This is part of my budget discussion as well, but last year, the entire year was forty-nine thousand dollars. This year, we're actually running ahead of that, in part, the other just because we have those energy stations with the crack heat exchange.
Any other questions, comments on the vouchers?
So, Bill, on, um, this, this heating system, how long have we had that? Um, I mean, kind of in place, it's been here for a while, right?
I'm just trying to think, the HVAC heater or the, or the school, the water heater or the air heater?
Well, I guess, there's one a lot newer than, one didn't replace earlier, the furnace for the...
On the HVAC, that's the one.
For the HVAC.
Yeah.
And that's for the air, air side, so, let's try to figure out, or, thinking, maybe, we could go back and request some kind of report from Cascade or whoever to see rooms that have been used over the past several years, I, I think that they can go back, by the way.
Well, we, Nicole actually took the time to go back twenty-one months on which water, gas, and electrical, yeah, and we've been running higher terms over the past year, and that was partly due, I believe, to the fact that, you know, how is the concern for some of these air quality issues, we actually increased our outside air that we were bringing in, which would then cause the, that was more for the gas, and the inefficiencies in the track, heat exchanges, which, um, have solved now, we have the new furnace, I would expect that at this point, our gas usage will go down, by the time we get in a couple more buildings, we should see that.
The other thing was, uh, great job getting the roof done, that's, I heard that's complete and taken care of, um, somebody did send an email out to us, uh, succeed all the commissioners on the roof bid process, and I was kind of looking into that through RCWs and just trying to figure out...
Did you say that for the direct report, the vouchers and the, or is it in the...
Well, there's just the roof, um, completion of the roof.
Right, right, I, I saw, that's kind of where I'm focusing on.
Um, I thought that there might be a resolution, or I, I thought I'd seen a resolution one time before, that the commissioners had approved in the past, that gave the outline or the, um, requirements that we need to comply with, I don't know what RCW they referred to, is there a resolution out there?
There is a resolution, and I've seen it, I can tell you exactly what that is.
But half rates, right?
It's, it's under seventy-five hundred dollars, director, and, I don't know if you have to get multiple bids, only seventy-five hundred dollars.
About fifteen thousand is...
To get up to fifteen, between seventy-five and fifteen thousand, I believe how it's worded is that I need to get multiple bids, and that I need to, I need to inform the commission.
Right.
I believe that it's over fifteen thousand square of the commission actually, I doubt, I could be wrong on the numbers, we got warning of a resolution, but, at the time that I got the bid, and informed the commission about that, which was last fall, when we were doing the budget for this year, um, I'll be honest with you, I was not aware of that, of that resolution being explained, um, over vote, you know, that was an issue at the time, and some of the commissioners were, said, wait a second, you know, put on the brakes here, we're having bad luck, right? We did put that, uh, can't remember the exact amount, of one of my budget contributions, but, um, when we got the bid, we did roofing, you know, we got another bid as well, and we did, uh, background check on gifts, everybody that we've talked to, that I've worked with them, they're great, and I can vouch for their integrity, their, and, and actually, when I called in this past August, and said, do you think from last November still stand, he was more than willing to stick it back, buy it right in the penny, and I've been very impressed with the work that they do, and, you know, the things that they start, they got some kind of manner, these breaking things, um, they're off, you know, there is one other thing, this may come in the budget section as well, and I have to be straight with the commission about this, um, when we got the job bid last fall, um, I was aware we got three sections of roof that, that we, one in the back here, one just over the kiddie pool, and one over the, kind of go through the, the hot tub, the rocks around, under the lobby, all of those roofs, like, pretty, um, what I wasn't aware of is that there was another black section of roof that made out of the same type of construction, and it was, it was the pool up here, um, and that one, oddly enough, at least, so there's been no problem with that, um, but Gibbs is going to come back with us, back to us with a, a bid on that, just, or not, something that's needed, but you go up there with torsed down surface that has the, um, uh, sort of like, silverish, nice of, uh, surface to it, um, you step on it, there's a couple of things, you can feel a little bit of air underneath, and the integrity of the entire roof is perfect, but it has started to rye up a little bit, so, um, there's that same contract, but he'll be our first guy that I talk to, and of course, you know, will follow the normal bid process after that, and that was, that was an older thing, so, I'm not at least getting a bid for him on that.
And then the group helps cover, does that make up for...
Yeah, we didn't get Coach Bill signed up until August, so it was three or four months worth of previous, you know, rear clerical errors, delay errors, but that, that bill is normally a thousand, five thousand dollars, forty dollars right there.
Come on.
Quarter body is the one out at, what we're calling out. Other questions, comments, concerns about the vouchers, all in favor of approving vouchers for forty-one thousand, one hundred ninety-eight dollars, ninety-five cents, and the transfers to MNO account and payroll account of thirty-nine thousand, one hundred thirty-two dollars, ninety-four cents? Aye?
Aye.
All again? All against? It passes unanimously. On the review of, thank you, sir. It just reminds me, we need the review of the July payroll that was not approved during the August meeting. I have a motion. I have a motion to approve the fifty-three thousand seven hundred forty dollars and thirty-seven cents payroll for July the second.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All against? Motion passes unanimously. Next is the staff reports.
Okay, thank you. Remember the process on your agenda, it's only just three, I assume, having gotten these reports for a week, and if any of you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them. A couple of things I wanted to mention, just sort of on our pool family status. One is something that's not on my report, and that was I was visited today by a man who was friends with Trudy Sundberg, who swam near the pool for many years. Trudy also taught in the, at Oak Harbor High School for many years, much loved teacher and was actually honored with a sculpture recently, in her memory. The man explained to me that there's Trudy Sundberg Memorial Fund down at Snow Island Library that's set up to sponsor Electric Tour, which down the island, at the various libraries here. And it's something that Trudy would have very much supported and Trudy would be very happy that this is done in her memory. So she got to last June and the pool staff here and our family here at the pool really missed her. I will have more information available about that on the public side of the district's page. It's a really nice thing to do in her memory. Also, I want to mention, Coach Bill, as many of you know, has been dealing with a real serious family issue. His wife has known about, has been extremely concerned about for probably six months now. It's not quite that long, but not long after he came here, he realized he went out in Portland for the past week. He had that and her surgery was on Monday, she's to go by tomorrow. And Bill is scheduled to, I have to give the man kudos. If someone had dealt with it over the last six months, many lesser people of us would have run away from here and gone back to, back to Portland and just stand there. And I think it's remarkable for his character and the type of man that he is, that he's really not letting show here that, that awesome job bringing this program anywhere is, and I'm very proud of it. Clear on that, and we're all looking forward to having you back there, wishing you all the best in public entity. And we don't talk about religion here, but Bill's comments all week have been extra spiritual. So, that's great, thank you very much. There's a very long citation in the, in my notes for Miss Carly Salt, who is, is very much. The one thing I'll say about Carly is how impressed I was during our shutdown relating with the, was real starting out here, organizing people and getting all the school equipment sanitized and cleaned up and scrubbed up. So many thanks to Carly and Erica, obviously by recommending her, her both passion there, still the same way. The one thing that I wanted to get some feedback from the commission on is on our policy review regarding employee family food privileges, which we discussed at length last month. I did, it's got, it gave small curries, that's what the commission suggested. And I asked the staff and the senior staff for their feedback. And what we came to is slightly variation to the suggestion that I made last month. And I feel like this is probably the direction that we ought to go, defining it this way. And once, once we, once we revise the employee handbook formally, then we can draft that, move through that document, then make an official district policy. But at this point, I guess my suggestion would be that we would define employee, so in other words, for terms of who gets employee discounts, who gets employee privileges, as somebody that's working, regularly working four shifts, four ten hours per month. And the four shifts came about because some of our staff are over construction, they might know that every once a week. And they come here every week, they're loyal, they're reliable, they do their job, but they only work an hour a week. So this ten hour suggestion that we had would cut them out. And of course, some people work two shifts, but they still get their ten hours. So either, either one of those definitions would fit. And then for immediate family members, they're sitting, spouses and children, some of the staff suggested that we just say that it's a relative or a member of your family living in the same household. So your kids still living at home, your lifeguard sixteen years old, and your mom wants to come swim, they can do that. You're out of the house, you're independent, you're on your own, that doesn't apply anymore. So that seems like a fair and slightly, slightly altered definition from last month and just looking for some feedback.
I will tell you, if I looked at the RCW on definitions, just like, you know, and with the WAC also, the WAC is a little different. The RCW had a definition of an immediate family, and it is RCW forty-two point one seven eight, uh, dot zero zero five. It would be thirty-four, immediate family includes the spouse or domestic partner, dependents, children and other dependent relatives, if living in a household. And I would say, for the purpose of the definition of intermediary, intersection, immediate family means individual spouse, domestic partner, child, stepchild, grandchild, half stepdad, half brother, half brother sister, half sister, and it just goes on and on and on. In the WAC, when it's talking about leaving work because of illness, you know, family illness? Yeah, actually, and that is the WAC one ninety-two dash one five oh dash three five five. It defines an immediate family a little different. Means your spouse, domestic partner and the children, including unborn children, siblings, stepchildren, foster children or parents of either spouse or domestic partner, or that are living with you or not, and other relatives who temporarily or permanently reside in your household. You know, when I listen to what you said, I mean, it all sounds good, and that we'll be living with domestic partners, you, you know, you've got to include that as well, right? And then you get it, you get it with stepkids and, so I don't know which way you guys want to go. I mean, one is a little more broad than the other, but I think you have to go by the law if you're going to use the word immediate family. Otherwise, you're going to have to spell it out at length.
One thing I did notice, we do have the definition in employee handbook. Not sure why we had such an issue with the definition. It goes into saying exactly what Steve had said, persons related by blood, marriage, legal adoption, degrees of consigning, validity, parent, parent wife, husband, brother, sister, child or grandchild or relative living in the employee's household. Now, this is a two thousand nine handbook, so is this the last handbook that we have?
I believe so. Can you tell me what context that's in, what phase it is?
Uh, it's in the definitions. One point three, just goes through definitions.
So that is there. Anyway, I just think we really need to go through this employee handbook from front to back and, you said it's share picking. I mean, it's a valid concern to add, but I think there's a lot of other things in there we need to address.
Even if we can't go the, into those words.
Yeah, that's true, yeah, it probably doesn't need to be.
I mean, you know, I mean, it opens your stuff up for, immediate family doesn't mean what it used to be.
And there's, there's a resolution passed, a previous resolution that talks about families swim for free.
It'd be easy, but anyone who lives in the same house.
Yeah, we need to look at it, that's for sure. Um, I don't think we should do anything, that's my opinion.
Anything else on the, this, this, I'm asking, I'm asking, but what's the thing that's going with the current practice? And until we have a chance to give it a more actual, because this is not a public.
The current practice is not, that's why I brought it up, it was critical.
So look, we're trying to find it at the moment, and somebody consider whatever the definition is. And if somebody says that there's somebody in an immediate family that's coming in, hanging on a big paragraph that you got in the RCW, that's fine. You know, I would say five people were, were involved in this program.
More than I had recorded here, there's one more actually, four, of course, right now.
Can you make a motion?
So one more.
So you make a motion to continue what we've done in the past until the board gives a review, the employee. So I have an motion to continue the employee.
Until what?
Hold on. Thank you. We continue the employee's family's privilege until the board gets to review the employee handbook. Do I have a second?
I would second.
All right, discussion. Thank you. Technically, no.
I was going to say, I've worked in the water for many years and I know what a supplement is in the legal law, but they are. Can you supplement the employee handbook or the addendum?
There are a lot of addendums to it.
Okay, that is okay. Uh, can you, at this point, try to put in a new one for that? Right now, if you cover the backside, no, Terry, tell them, cover the backside.
I like that.
Okay, because that's what we always do for everything.
I like saying that, yeah, that's true.
Yeah, all right, well, I'm going to have to come to work here if you can get in the green book.
So the WAC and the RCW are what regulations the district law will take with that. And as our district employee, besides the law, that I'm covering, is whether for a bridge, maybe decision made by you under, as whatever bridge now you're calling, your handbook. So there's, there's some instructions and areas to determine the use of the heart injury to make a decision on what that benefit looks like for legal definition, all kinds of things like geographical needs, life rights and privileges we have as a customer, on marriage and state law. Those apply specifically to specific laws and that's in the state.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to comment on this, here, on the floor. You know, I certainly don't mean to belabor this thing, but you know, this came up because a lot of our past years. And here's what happened today, I'm very confused because when she referred back to a previous demonstration, it defined it very strictly, it was spouses and children. And she said, that's the last time I heard it ever defined. You know, I said, well, that's not a definition that I have ever made because that would not.
Thank you.
And we, we do nothing and we, I guess, I look back at my first grade math where you can't multiply zero times anything. You know, we don't have a policy now, so can't continue a non-existent policy. I would suggest, respectfully, that we come to some sort of definition that will hold temporarily until we revise this in my hand.
Can I read that again, please? If you wouldn't mind, let's see, if you wouldn't mind. Can we have a second, please?
So you have a motion to continue with the family's privilege. Well, if Bill wants to go on some sort of a policy, I would say. Gentlemen, I need to interrupt this in the middle of this discussion. Does anybody, Ms. Graham needs to leave? Does anybody in the commission have any questions? Or do you have any questions for Ms. Graham, she's one of our petition for, for the water country, if she's ready, she needs to leave. Okay, thank you. Does anybody sitting here have any questions for Ms. Graham?
The water was very cool for a few days and everybody knows, I think it was eighty-one. And the pool has always been an eighty-two. Iceman, where it were, I have needed water. And that one degree is huge. As in life, you can always put a sweater on, but you can't do much when it's really hot. And I'm wondering if it would be possible if we had glass bars or things like that, that people were rarely used, they were specific to the program. So coming up like we do that. And if that's my dear solution, keep it at eighty-two, which is what we've always been, and that's about as far as one, some of us can take it, especially the older last year's one. And I think it's really a hard question. With eighty-two, I think that's what we've always bound it, we admitted that there's been topics of the petition on the whole. That eighty-two was a number that's a little cool for people that were channing a lot, a little too hot for people, but everybody survived. And I would be happy with an eighty-two, but I'm not happy with eighty-three. And so I'll be back on your ear, please respond to that.
The mission is to have, to have people decide fishing just for temperatures before saturated on the earth and what, because.
I just want you to hear that.
For all of it, because, you know, it's the, with the team, and that's the two most important. And then the, then, you know, there's a real problem, the tenses is down now, everybody's saying, this is cold, it's not fun, it's not. I don't like it anymore. And I feel, I don't like it, I'm going to, or going to April, we can never, I can't, we have to come, be, and suit everybody. And I know it's getting really old, but I'm, I'm careful of money issues, everybody, you know, things have to be.
A hundred and twenty-seven?
A hundred and forty-seven.
A hundred and forty-seven, the makeup of that group of people.
Um, everybody, it's, and people have been done, you know, it could be a lot more, I'm sure, just to take the face of the woman house. We have this option, I'm sorry, I don't need it.
I don't want you to be discouraged, you know, one person has one opinion and I may have another. So please don't be discouraged, because, you know, if they think that we're going to do what we want to do, I will tell you this, my mind is not made up and I take it very seriously. I have this small kid that fills the exact same way. And it really is about everyone, it's not about one group of them.
Actually, I mean, I just respectfully, I, it's, it's such a, you know, such a big issue. There's people, for, for me to go to the yoga, I'm very resistant to six dollars, but groups of us are thinking, well, you know, maybe not here, this is my pool.
You've conducted yourself beautifully and I truly appreciate it.
Thanks, very, very much. And I'll just say petition for, with you, if I may.
So, thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. All right, so, employee's family's one privilege, we're back to discussion, leave that for a minute.
You know, the only, I mean, if you guys want to leave as, as played out in here, I really do think you have to put in domestic partner. You have to, because the culture we live in, you know, it's not included in there. And as soon as you do, you go down that road, you open yourself up. And, you know, I mean, that's one thing the WAC and the RCW both did, did miss. And I think it would just be wise, if we're going to go down that road, that you at least add that in.
There is a previous resolution and this, what I found was Harley Employee Benefit Plan. And it talks about types of benefits provided within opposition classification, hours worked per week, which is what you're getting to with the employee. How do we define who is entitled to this program? Well, they did address this, in fact, it was revised, this one's revised eight sixteen ninety-nine. But this says it was superseded by ninety-nine seventy-nine. Could you write that down and get that resolution for us at one point or another? Because they say that this previous resolution had the benefits program actually broken out as to how much a person worked. If they worked up to nine point nine nine hours per week, employees and immediate family members, when accompanied by employee or while employee is working, they use the facility free of charge during regular program. So that's just the baseline. Then from ten to nineteen point nine nine hours, they get the ten percent off all regular retail or programs. Twenty hours to twenty-nine point nine nine, they get twenty percent off. Twenty hours to twenty-nine point nine nine, they get twenty percent off, same, but, you know, family members can come in, immediate family members. So, everybody adds the immediate family members, if they're an employee, um, while they're working, they had to be here and accompany them, and then if you're full-time, thirty to forty hour, forty hours a week, you got thirty percent off regular price. So, I don't know why we're, did this get superseded by this other resolution? Could you look into that, and determine what happened to this whole program that we did have? Um, this says, this is resolution ninety-eight, that's date six, um, established to seventeen ninety-eight, revised date sixteen ninety-nine, and somebody's written down here, those Ron tells, and Harvey Prosser was the commissioner at the time, um, Steve Hall, uh, they say it was superseded by this resolution ninety-nine seventy-nine, which I'm sure is where they have some of the current employee benefits. I believe ninety-nine seventy-nine was the entire employee handbook. Oh, is it? If you look at, I believe so.
I don't know.
If you look at the, I was looking for, in the handbook over the years, they are still dated ninety-nine seventy-nine with a change number on it.
Is that right?
Okay. So, this is the latest and greatest, but they did at one time have these, this breakdown by number of hours worked, and, um, maybe that's no longer, I don't know what happened to that, or why it, you know, was left out, or if it's in here somewhere and I can't find it, but-
That could be something. We told them that's just like a half hour and a half, and we're headed down that road.
Yeah.
Can, can I, I, I don't know what to say, I thought about taking a whack, and you pull out the one part about the unborn, but it defines in here what an immediate family is, and I think it's something we would all be happy with. To go with this, and, uh, it would be, uh, make a motion that we-
We can't, yeah, my, my three procedures aren't all that great. I'm pretty sure we can't make another motion on one of them.
Okay. My bad, I forgot we even have one. Okay.
One is that.
Okay. All right, I, I forgot all about that.
No, 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 no.
Yeah. So, let me ask you, Alan, um, if we can talk about this. He defines an immediate family, means your spouse, domestic partner, children, foster children, stepchildren, siblings, parents of either spouse or domestic partner, whether living with you or not, other relatives who temporarily or permanently reside in your household. I think that's something that every one of us would consider family.
But, what, how do we put a window on it?
Then, then you nail that thing down, immediate family, like the RCW defines, and it's just basically your, your spouse, your domestic partner, and your kids, and that's it.
Oh, the case, that's a family, so you get that resident with you. Lived in your household, it's what-
Yes, lived in your household.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not, it's not, mother, you live in your household with-
It's your spouse. There it is. Immediate family, means your spouse, domestic partner. Yes, she may. Take out the unborn, if it doesn't apply yet, not in this case.
What if you're pregnant? Make us come with you.
You're all committed. That was fun.
It's a free call. Whether hitting with you or not, another value is the temporary or permanent reside in your household, uh, so it becomes the whole world for us. You know, I might have to narrow it down a little. And I, as Carol had mentioned, you know, and he's, he's waxed applied, his definitions in the context of other laws, like, is that what you're going with?
Right.
Is a heavier, is a heavier standard, is all your practices and take it.
Correct.
Okay.
We can define family as, as the voting authority, as the voting authority for the district, we can define family as, with this purpose, not for, like, this or our health, and, and your family. So, the motion currently stands to, uh, continue the family, employee's family's one privilege as written, until the board has a chance to rewrite or review the two thousand and nine handbook. Further discussion on the motion. All in favor of continuing the employee's family's one privilege as written, until the board has a chance to review the two thousand and nine handbook, all aye?
Aye.
All against?
I'd say.
One extension. Lori, did you vote? Lori? The, sorry, we were voting on the motion to continue the employee's family's one privilege as written, until we-
Yeah, I'm, 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 yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm, yeah.
Okay. So, four against, one extension. Three, four, one extension. I don't know. Thank you very much.
Just have clarification, is, as written in the employee handbook currently-
Correct.
Which still doesn't have a definition other than the law, like that Kurt mentioned.
Correct.
That's what he means.
That's for the, that's for the employee handbook. Okay. Thank you.
For the record, you go, go through yourself, with the active partner comes on.
Okay. So, with the rest of the director's part, um, that look. Any questions, comments, or concerns, on the director's?
That's all I have at all, since we mentioned.
Uh, the van stuff, I just, uh, sort of comment on those, are they in bad shape, or?
Um, the little, um, Tzu Tzu, yes, in terrible shape, yeah, as in, I mean, it runs, but the interior is horrible, there's, uh, it's, 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 at all, so there's really no point in keeping that, and the, um, passenger van, who, they didn't put that in, I think it was being used by the running club for a while, uh, yeah, it was donated to us, actually, by our, uh, transit, so I contacted them, it makes sense, you know, after, once you have it for two years, you can do it every long, and, so, at this point, once again, it does not make you.
So, the question, I'm just, I'm, 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 we don't have to replace it.
That's correct. And I won't make that move until I actually get real numbers on what their worth, I just put that under, and I have not contacted your, uh, well, to take off of our, our term policy, which it, it will be a, thank you, so, uh, yeah, I don't know, something, I know, I mentioned that it would be brought up tonight, so, just wanted to give you contact, to know, like, I think, hope support, I mean, major, I see it in time, and I think it's definitely a business plan, which is, uh, I don't know that anything you should worry about, if you have questions about, uh, by the way, I think I have one comment about the business plan, and, look, um, page twenty-two of the overall packet, under, uh, part of the business plan, under plus structure, there's typo in there, um, Phil and I had discussed whether it's the high school program, or whether our intent was to have that, uh, be discontinued, or not be held for a certain course of the year, and we wanted to take that, since, of course, with the high school program, will not be held in August, September, October, once your habit got less in there, and see my little sort of editing at the tandem, and, uh, that's, that's, that's not the longer, high school program designed for a long year. Let's talk about business finally. Um, I think Sean wants that, because we're, I mean, in relation to, to, I think, must be, uh, the, the-
I was thinking, you know, in the interest of time, uh, because Bill isn't here, Phil Patterson, that, and we should save some of this for when he is here.
Very good. Because we've always, we've always felt, uh, uh-
Find what you just said, I, 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 they can't, they can't lie to me, in this one.
Okay. Uh, there are those other commission, commission, but we can, in fact, in fact, in my, in my soul, we want to, to, to actually establish an effective working partnership with the mission. Well, the commission may want to deal directly with Bill, or something, um, and he'll, that in what way? Well, it always helps. I, I can't get this coming up, but I know that it's something that's very, it's hard with the program, and we may want to talk on about issues, or things that we've heard, and this, um, but this is a law where you're controlling it, and I don't want to see that in regulations, I don't mind administrative, I don't like it, but I don't want, the commission can't be, can't be bound by that.
I don't think that was the point, really, I'm sure it wasn't, but I have to leave things for all of those difficult problems, there's something there, and it's the thing that, I'm worried about.
Mm-hmm. It, you know, this, this gets to this other meeting that we want to have at some point about how we structure things, and if, this is part of my review, about, you know, what's my level of authority, and what's the commission's, and my comment at that point was, I can deal with whatever, I'm fine, but, you know, if you look at our bylaws, the way the bylaws are written, the management of every staff member here calls directly under me, and the commission doesn't, doesn't deal with individual employees, they don't deal with me.
The type of bylaws, we have general oversight of the operation, and we have, to have us to manage, we have to, to, over-overside strategic, um, because that was, how your hands even works, and you just, and it's right.
Right, and, and all I'm saying, Alan, is it needs to be defined, but that's the bylaws, too.
So, I understand, I'm not waiting with you on it. All I'm saying is that that section, that has been used negatively.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think he meant it, it's, you know, establishing this-
He may know that, he may not, but I've been around long enough, that I know if you want to clean up off them, it's before the issue happens, or if it's later. So, that's the one that I was, um, so, if you were, uh, sorry, we don't know, we're sitting here to talk about now, um, and as Kurt just said, um, you know, Bill's not here to talk about that and address that, but can you please make a note of that, and get that quick, Phil, so next month, he can actually present it. And address that in terms specifically.
This document is not designed to be fully geared for, and, you know, this, a plan like this changes, under regularize, it's when they start looking at, you know, did you actually perform to the goals that you had for the last six months, and what's gonna happen next? So, this is a, this is a living document right here.
I, I have to change this picture, for, required volunteer hours, family time commitment, I had a problem with this two years ago, and people were talking about it, I do not, I volunteer my time, and I'm okay to do that, but requiring people to do it, I don't like it. If you're in a military town, where mom and dad may be the poor, single parent with two or three kids, you know, uh, maybe they can't just volunteer this time, or maybe you got a case to where you got a crappy parent, it doesn't care, you know, I don't think you can rule the kid out, because mom and dad don't, uh, go on volunteer, and you've got a disabled child at home, and then the parent can't volunteer this time. You open yourself up when you go down that road, I think, to where now you're making exceptions for people, and we're back to that, we've done it in the past, and, you know, all the research report points to that, and where exceptions were made for certain people, and where other people weren't allowed to do certain things, and I think that's what you're gonna get yourself into here. And I tell you, having that volunteer, the youth minister and stuff, in my, in my life, when you start requiring people to volunteer, they're gonna, they're gonna volunteer less, I think. You know, if you tell me how much I gotta do, that's what you're gonna get. If you don't tell me, you're gonna get more than that. I just don't want me to go down this road and require people, and maybe you can get into a payment, if they don't. It, it actually says, if the commitments are not met, whether you're in, can tell an, an hour, he will be assessed. How are you gonna make him pay that? There is, yeah, there's no way you can make somebody pay that.
Well, it's in the contract that they signed beyond the team, and then you fill them at the end of the year, and that's what you make. But, you know, this, I, this is a round and round, round decision, my kids were on the way for eighteen years, and I can tell you that, you know, it went this way, and it went this way, and every other swim club you've probably ever been associated with, I've only seen it go back and forth. Um, you know, do you require it, or do you just let people volunteer on the hand? Do you decide that if you're not gonna require it, and it's always the same, give people that show up to, to, um, volunteer at swimming, and then you end up going, okay, we have to cancel the meeting, we can't give any timers, you know, if, if that's the way it runs, then the team has to decide whether they even have the, we're involved to open it anymore.
I just don't want to be-
Like, oh, no, I, I, I get the whole concept, and it's something that, that, you know, here's, here's something, and Alan's right on, on this one, that, I gotta give you this, Alan, because this is something that, the commission has, the commission has total discretion over a policy like this, because, what are we charging our, our patrons? So, yeah, please, could I, could I actually make this suggestion?
I understand the way you work, I understand the way you put right that I love things, including, but it's absolutely right, and if you look at these factors, and maybe instead of seeing this as a document of rights and obligations which are enforceable, take a look at its coagulation, where, for example, for the commission, it might be interesting trying to help the organization get ahead, rather than the commission is an external variable, which will look through the director's trying to deal with, um, this commission gets really increased memorial when, I think, comes out, and the same thing, if you're telling people they have to call on, you know, they're gonna be fine, um, I have some people in me that react and says, "You want it the way you want people to, try," you know, um, see, it's absolutely right, um, it's gonna get a long message out to the people, there's gotta be another way and right to talk to them, you know?
I'm gonna say that, that, if I, if I actually, I'm gonna say that, you know, thanks, really. Uh, I think Kurt brings up, so, the good point earlier, I think it would be good to have Bill here to help us, I think we can move this to the business next time. I think everybody brings valid arguments to the point, I'm sure there's much more to hear about this. I think there's also a lot to be heard about the difference between strategic and tactical, um, and how much, none of both are tactical, how much, none of both are strategic, and I can guarantee you that we all don't agree on that, and that's part of the way to head. So, I think what we can do is we can table a lot of the conversation we're having right now about this plan, we've seen it, we've reviewed it, we have questions and comments we'd like to make, Bill, and you also about this, so we can table this and move it next month. All this was put in here for is, because, actually, I asked for it, since everyone asked for it. I asked for a way ahead, I wanted to see something to make, that we could hold the new head coach, say, "Hey, communication's been an issue, we want to see a plan," and that's what I wanted to see, and I asked you, um, and to present, you presented, thank you, we'll have the questions, and, and we can take this for a month, and reflect on it, and come back next month. Did you wanna say something?
Just one thing, I thought it was interesting, let me see, incentives, that's a great idea, figure out, if you're punishing somebody, and give incentives for volunteering, be positive towards that, thought that was helpful.
And you roll into the gifting question, so.
All right, so for further discussion, thank you, first of all, for, yeah, I, I think, I think, yeah, I think, yeah, I think, yeah, I think, yeah. Anything for the staff book, any other further comments, questions about the staff book? Lori? All right, unfinished business. Okay, thank you. Unfinished business, district mission states, that, only if that would be a way ahead, all right? We need to move that to the way ahead, because I think we need all the, all the, all right? All right?
We're moving that, so.
The way, the way, I'll talk about the way ahead, moving on to the business, since I'm not supposed to talk about it during unfinished business. Completion of the director's performance review, um, we're gonna actually move that, I, I can't make a motion. I would like to see us move that, sir, towards next month, when we have more time to review, but that's under unfinished business.
All of them, but we've deferred to November seventeenth, or whatever the day is.
I have a motion to move the, uh, completion of director's performance in November seventeenth, November twenty-first. Meeting, I have a second. Further discussion? No further discussion, all in favor of moving the completion of director's performance review to November first, all in favor?
Um.
All, all against, obvious motion, that is unanimously. November, there we go, pool temperature pressure. Ms. Graham?
I'm not gonna tense it, no, no. Good to hear that. Okay. Um, we've got a lot on our plate here, we've got a special process, interesting information, and Mr. Tom Johnson, who is, uh, buying you, and going into the pool, this wonderful, um, thermometer, thank you, that's a, that's a, for big ones, thermometer, um, that will be able to monitor this for a month, and give us collected data for a month. So, we're, so we're gonna, I have a motion to defer any motion on-
We'll be able to see the data from that one.
So, there'll be a particular motion to wait for a month to collect data from the pool temperature before, we have a motion?
To defer for collected sound data from the water temperature monitor.
So, we have a motion to defer making a change to the pool temperature for three months, until we, uh, that'll come the water temperature for a month. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Discussion.
Well, it's that long? Three months?
We don't know, we never know, use it, so. It's a good data, it's a fluctuation, and the second half of the question, I agree, because it's, um, we'll have it all the day, and we'll-
And it'll actually fluctuate during the coldest time of the year, too.
Yeah, always, and, well, actually, November. Well, you expect it, when it's outside of the temperature. Well, you expect it to be outside of the temperature.
But the heat of the, the heat of the pool temperature, uh, will be affected by that, so.
Prove, set at different levels, uh, to.
Six inches down below our, like, potential. So, it's really put down by the, uh, lifeguard stand halfway down the pool.
Probably.
Yes, not at four watt level.
I have a logistical question about it, I haven't taken the time to look at, would be known in place for a sedative spot at the pool?
The, uh, Texas River Road Springs, something like that, two, we want to just make a loop around the length of the lifeguard stand, halfway down the pool, and just leave it running.
How far does it take out?
You can keep just, well, stopping it off.
Okay. The way I, the way I, it was, it would be, well, yeah, people play it like a rubber duck, but, but, um, I, my concern was, it's, it's different streams of water. And for instance, you know, down at the end of lane two and five, we get jets coming shooting straight up.
Right.
And that is sometimes heated water, but not, and then you get a big variation. So, why start to drop the thermometer right in between lane three and four, where there's still some water, and I think it's eventually, it takes the real temperature of the real water.
The thing is, the recommendation is, is you put it out there in the center of the pool at night when nobody's there. And again, between the two lanes, lane two and five, and see what it does overnight. And again, see what the temperature is there, or if it changes to the wall, uh, for the, you know, this period.
Yeah. I'll, I'll try water. That, that, the first couple of weeks, and those are going to do the blowout, Alan, and Tom, um, the first couple of weeks after shutdown, we had some issues with getting the HVAC system that had just been replaced restarted. And if you remember, the air temperature was down around seventy-five degrees. And that causes, that causes the water to just go crazy like this, because when you have that much of a differentiation between air and water, you're evaporating a lot, so you have these big jets of fresh water coming in to replace it. And then that caused the, the, uh, thermostat to go, oh, this water is seventy degrees that's coming in, I can heat it. By the time it's heated, that's because I walk around on the deck and it's in eighty-four degree water, you know, Dr. McDo here is looking up at it, and it's, and, and which is a valid concern at that point, if you're working out like that, eighty-four degree water, then you're, you're suffering, too. The kids are, too, and I think that if people wanted not to look at the records for, for large kids, who might have.
Sorry, if you're looking at records of kids who are flipping or masturbating, if they're in an according to the data, are kids who must.
Competitively, seven eight, so by going through eighty-two, uh, we're already giving up quite a bit for the competitive swimmers.
It's a minute and a half on the other.
And, um, one degree may not seem like a lot for some people, but when you go from seventy-eight to eighty-two, um, one degree more, that's a lot.
The other, the other logistical concern that I have is a five-hour hand-checked thermometer, which you do four times a day, um, for the last couple of weeks, it's been, been, um, eighty, that's it. And it doesn't drop two degrees, it never lost two degrees, it's just booming to eighty-one one day, I mean, it's consistent in there, so.
And I would be glad to have the thermometer in one, uh, contact, except for fluctuation. The first house in the middle of the pool, which will be good for hungry at night to see the fluctuations, all the water is going inside the pool in the daytime.
I would give it a forty-eight hour trial on both different parameters.
Yeah, if we can do that.
That's why, that's why, that's pretty much, you know, we're going to leave it attached to the, the lifeguard stand on a regular basis twenty-four hours a day. And then after we try it out in the middle of the pool at night, and see what the chart shows. And the bigger thing is to see what the cycle, the duty cycle is run, and then how is that water temperature affected by that duty cycle? And the bigger thing is, if the duty cycle is not properly set, it might be re-sweet by parents. It might be seventy-nine, eighty-four, and we're going to get it down to eighty and eighty-three. But that, that, we have no historical data, computer data, and I'd say this will provide.
Okay. Further discussion? All in favor of wasting three months of data, wasting three months of data using the aquatic water temperature before ma- making any changes to the pool temperature? All in favor? All against? Motion passed, is unanimously. Auditor's investigation. In here, we've already had questions about it, auditor's investigation came back. Um, we can put it in our director's report, mention the new business because of the fact we self-reported. And my question to, um, to Bill is just, real quick, uh, just before, part of, uh, the response to the state auditor's report is you're going to demand full repayment and seek recovery, um, how are we going to do that? Are we going to be allowed to come?
I've spoken with our attorney, well, excuse me, the jurors of attorney, about that. Obviously, it's just the jurors finding us and him, uh, their, their pursuits, but they say that's not their business, which I believe they probably will.
We're waiting to hear that, uh, from the jurors, to see what they're going to do. Okay. Comments, questions, or concerns from the board?
Well, yeah, I can see requesting repayment of the six hundred thirty-nine dollars and forty-nine cents from the coach. I think that's legitimate, and I, I don't think that he's going to have any hope in paying that back. I think I heard through the grapevine that's a no-brainer for, apparently feels pretty terrible about it. Recovery with seven, you know, our legal expenses, but I don't, I'm not a lawyer, and, um, I don't know how they would go about that. Um, I guess it's stuck with me, because it says the district, well, it has commissioners, or is it just something that, because it went to the state auditor, they, it's an automatic, or how's that work?
Well, the way I read the recommendations from the state auditor here, we also recommend the district's secret recovery of the six hundred thirty-nine dollars and forty-nine cents from the aqua, former aquatic coach, and the alleged investigation cost of seven thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty-seven cents from the former employee and board, its insurance bonding company, as opposed. Any compromise or settlement of this claim by the district must be approved in writing by the attorney general and the state auditor as directed by law. So, that statement right there kind of caught me. Any compromise or settlement of this claim by the district must be approved in writing by the attorney general and the state auditor as directed by state law. So, if we choose not to do that, we just have to address it or through the jurors, or Nathan, Manny, our district's, uh, district's attorney, we would have to write the attorney general or state auditor and, and, um, explain to them why we're not going to do that. Right now, the litigation going on, um, I think we give the jurors a chance to, uh, address this first, and then give Nathan to go forward, because either way, we have to, if we choose not to do this, we would have to talk to, uh, we would have to tell, we'd have to write the attorney general, state auditor, why we choose not to.
They don't really give us a timeframe to, to do that, so it sounds like we have time to, to attorney's.
There are a couple other factors in here that about that seven eight hundred bucks, um, we get Nathan's seat up, obviously, that's a moment as well, um, but the jurors thinks it, they're out of their mind in the full litigation process already. Um, so I would imagine if the jurors goes after that seven eight hundred bucks, they're going to point that out, so, pointed out earlier, like, the taxpayer's money. So, I guess my condition would be, um, that we find a way, because even though it's going to cost us money, they, they need to, in that direction, and try to get the money back. But we'll wait and see what the jurors have to work it.
Hey, well, you might want to see what Nathan says, too, as to whether it's even feasible.
I would ask Nathan, yeah, I think Kurt's on to something. I think we ask Nathan, what if it costs us to reclaim the seven thousand dollars compared to what it would cost us to have charges oversee the seven thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars?
Do we even have a chance of getting, and still paying an attorney? So, now we got this cost plus the attorney's. I'm just saying, we need to.
It'd be cheaper just to have a writer, for the attorney general, state auditor. Well, it's, we need to wait and see, and we don't have a timeframe, so, in that regards, we do have.
It's going to be possible, since he has a lawsuit against the district, if they were to, uh, tariff suit us there.
Not sure, I have a little confident or commenting on that.
Have you? I don't know. I think I can give to the commission whether they're listening to their advice, but the state is trying to be very, very, um, there's a long while to prove there, and I'm getting tired of the pool, uh, going around and trying to, um, try to, uh, how I'm much more lenient on adults, and that is, uh, control, future water, whatever.
Let's get a report back from the auditor next month, just to see what they're going to do.
Well, people have died, should have informed you in the meantime, but, you know.
Um, but, any, next, any other, pardon, any other comments, questions, or comments from the board on the auditor's investigation? Now, thank you. Budget meeting discussion. Oops. Okay. If I can do this right.
It's just a little bit, we have to.
Hold on a second. Um, all right, the budget meeting discussion. There is actually going to be a special meeting for the budget meeting, and that is next Friday, is that, Friday, the twenty-fifth, correct?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock, Friday the twenty-fifth. There will be a public announcement to that through the normal channels. And that's the budget meeting, we will cover specifically the budget. There will be public comments, um, the format and the meeting, um, we've got some, I guess, quite a few comments, uh, positive emails about the need for public comments during the budget discussion, um, for people to, uh, come up with, you know, share ideas with the, uh, with the board. Having looked at our federal government being shut down for two-plus weeks on a budget, and all of us, I think, no matter what side of the line we go on, being frustrated and having plenty of suggestions, but I think it's just very appropriate that we, as a local government entity, use the right thing and include just other on that. So, our budget discussion meeting will be next Friday at six o'clock right here. So, um, please bring any suggestions, comments, questions, or concerns to that.
Questions, Kevin?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to provide a back-up to the patients, to the commissions, I'll get as much as I can for you tomorrow, I'm going to follow it up with, with continued rebounds to the proposed budget with my assumptions throughout the course next week. I'll get as much as I can for you tomorrow, but just for focus purposes, is this focused primarily on twenty-fourteen? Okay. Still have issues with in twenty-thirty?
Yes, and, and the whole discussion, I believe, I, I saw Kurt.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm, I want to be able to represent.
Are there anything specific that you guys, you all can think important, pick up personally, and you would like included in?
Would you please put, uh, the, my, my printer at home, so.
Oh, put the.
They have hard copies, but you still get the email, but you just want a hard copy. I can do it better, but I need to have it out in front of me, so I can work on it.
It was about a hundred pages of the library. A little cameo, really, I don't get a lot of work, Kurt. Um, I thought I heard something mentioned that there may be a facilitator.
That's, uh, that's other than that, but, okay, yeah, I'll be there. So, that's a very good question, sir.
That'd be good, keep it on track.
Yep. Anything else on the budget meeting? That's all I ask. No, no questions, nothing, all right. Way ahead meeting, we need to set a date for this November, I, I've got very few days left in November, so I'm, I'm going to ask each and every commissioner tonight, please send me three days in November, that will work, so we're way ahead meeting. This is the meeting I was going to have a facilitator with, an outside facilitator to help us, uh, uh, to sort of take a way ahead meeting. So, I'm working that right now, and I will have more for you hopefully by the November twenty-first meeting. Actually, I will hope to have more for you next week at the budget meeting, how about that?
Okay. Three dates in November?
Three dates in November from everybody, please.
Oh, is that true?
You can only get it two, and we can only get it two, that's fine, thank you. All right. The other thing we have for new business is the, uh, talking about votes in the minutes. So, Steve, did you want to make a motion about that?
Yeah, actually, I was about to make a motion from this point forward in the minute, that we include the votes of each, uh, commissioner, unless it is, you may have a motion, then we could have a, a.
We've lost minutes and included in the minutes, monthly minutes, the votes of each of the commissioners on any motion unless it's unanimous.
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A second. Discussion.
Here, this is a can, unless I cannot tell the police.
At least, it's a problem.
That's the only problem, is one point.
So, fire a chair, do a, yeah, each time, so fire a chair, do a, fire a, each time.
Okay, I group it, the crew.
Further discussion, Laurie?
Right, out there.
All right, all in favor then of the motion for votes in minutes for all names with votes for each minute, she's named by votes for each motion in the minutes unless it's unanimous? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
All in favor, except one, motion passed. All right, public com, further public comments, if anybody else would like to make last public comments. Thank you.
No, I didn't see Rich in there. The, the next month meeting for November, a week early, we're all blocking the twenty-first, which is going to be at four p.m. or whatever, Thursday, the second.
What happened? They moved up over, but it's meeting starting up in October.
But you can't approve the, uh, budget at a public meeting at that meeting. You have to, you have to, it's the second, the Thursday of November to approve the budget to increase Island County by that timeframe to make their timeline requirement.
And then, particularly, the first.
Okay, and try here for, for example, the second Thursday of November, to make that requirement, does that change now?
Last year, we did it on the forty-eighth.
Okay. So, good, so, why did it happen again? Yeah, always a good question. Any other further public comments? Discussions from the board members? Ms. Clark?
Aye.
Okay. Ms. Crawford?
I'm good.
What's your vote? I'm dropping.
I'm good.
I have no further comments. Next, we have the Thursday, November twenty-first, at, next, regular meeting, Monday meeting will be Thursday, November twenty-first at seven p.m. October twenty-second, six p.m. is the budget meeting. That's correct. Special one, thank you. All right. The chairman, do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to your chair.
We have a motion for her chair, do I have a second?
Aye.
We have a couple seconds. All in favor of a jury? Um, Mr. Doodle? Both of those, I had motion and pass. All right. Ms. Clark?
Aye.
Ms. Crawford?
Aye.
Ms. Crawford?
Aye.
The motion passed unanimously. Thank you, haven't been that everybody. Oh, wait, it has to be now, again, that's probably. Oh, thank you, sir.